The work session, is our camera crew ready here? Where's Jonathan, are you the B team tonight?
I agree with you, Mike.
I'd like to call to order the Cuyahoga County work session for February the 26th, 2013. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Is that where we are? We are. Calling the roll, Ms. Conwell?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Ms. Simon?
Here.
Mr. Greenspan?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Germana is absent. Mr. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Schron?
Here.
And Ms. Conley?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Mr. Germana is unavailable. I'd like to entertain a motion this time to mark his absence as excused.
Second in all, is the favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, Mr. Germana's absence is marked excused. I purpose this discussion, item three is update on the county administration complex. And I'm not sure who's going to go first, is Ms. Tewin, or you want to proceed?
Just for the audience, this is an update, I guess our first update, really, in a work session as to the progress since we passed the ordinance authorizing to go forward with the GEIS contract. This is our first update as to the process is going on, so we're looking forward to hearing from you.
You took my thunder, that's what I was going to say. But I think the county executive would like to say a few words first.
Just a couple of words. First, I wanted to make sure I gave you an opportunity to ridicule me now about being a Republican presidential candidate before the full meeting, so if you want to get it out of your system now.
Well, you have to come over to our office, we've got some new Pez dispensers for the president's. And so we're looking forward to a Fitzgerald Pez dispenser.
See, that's why I want you to get them out of your system now.
Okay, all right, before the regular meeting.
Just a couple of things quickly. One is, you know, I want to just reiterate what I said in the state of the county, and that is, I can't be more pleased or grateful the way that this whole process has unfolded with council. I think it has been a model of cooperation and sharing ideas, and I just want to tell you again, just to thank you again for the way that this process has worked, because it's been a great example of the council administration jointly tackling a very complicated, multifaceted project with a lot of variables and handling it well. So I just want to thank you again for that. There were a couple of things I know that have come up recently, and I guess there were maybe a council person or two that had asked if I had an opinion on something particular with the building, and so, and I'm probably not going to stay for this whole work session, so I would just say that I'm in agreement with the proposal that you're going to hear today, and on two specific points. Number one, with what I've always expressed is on the walkway issue, I'm agnostic on that. If council felt strongly that the walkway was counter to what they think good urban planning is, I'm okay with that. I'm not one of those people that's doctrinaire about saying walkways are always bad, or they're always good. To me, it was just a question of convenience, and what's the best way for employees or constituents to access the building in all types of weather? And I'm not particularly concerned about it. If it were to come down, I'd be fine with that. If it were to stay up, I'm okay with that, but what I asked the GEIS company to do, I said certainly the status quo of it is unacceptable, and some kind of quick paint job on a pretty dilapidated structure would not be sufficient either. So I hope you hear some things today that indicate that if there were to be a rehab of the existing walkway, it would be significantly more substantial than just a fresh coat of paint on an old structure. But whatever direction the council takes, I do think it's important, it's fine with me. I do think it's important to do that quickly, and reach that conclusion quickly, because I think it will have some impact on their construction schedule in terms of what they can get done in 2013 before the weather prevents them from doing certain kinds of work. So I think it's, I'm fairly agnostic on it. I'm satisfied with what you're going to see today. If we go in a different direction, I'm okay with that, I just would like it to be done in an expeditious manner. On one other issue, I know that's come up, in terms of whether there should be kind of some of the amenities at the locations, such as places to eat, or have a coffee break, or cafeteria. I can just tell you, I had never envisioned that there would be a cafeteria there. I know we have a cafeteria in the Justice Center, we've never had one in the county administration building. We'll have a few more employees here, but one of the reasons that I thought it made sense to locate there is that there are a lot of dining options in that area, at all different price levels. And to me, to recreate a place where we would kind of be keeping employees in the building, as opposed to going out of the building, is not something I'd ever anticipated, and you're not going to see it presented here. I would view that to be a rather major departure, because if you were going to do a cafeteria right, you have to do something of a scale and a scope that I think would probably significantly change the, both the layout of the facility, and also the price points of the facility. You know, it's interesting, if you compare this to what happened with the Juvenile Justice Center, they made a very conscious decision that they didn't believe that that neighborhood was that amenable to foot traffic to go eat other places at Juvenile Justice Center, and they decided to have a really, pretty much state-of-the-art facility within the Juvenile Justice Center. You've all seen it, and they made that decision early on. It doesn't mean that we couldn't go in that direction, but that would be a fairly major departure. I wouldn't, again, I mean, if council felt strongly that we need to do that, then we'll live with it, but I think it would have, I think it would have real implications on when it would get done, and how much space we would have there, and what the whole layout would look like. Doesn't mean we can't do it. It wasn't anything that, if it was up to me, I would say, no, I don't believe that we need to, I don't believe that we need to do that. So I just wanted to express myself on those two issues, and turn it back over to Director Tewin for the presentation. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you very much.
Can we ask her?
Sure. You can ask me whatever you want.
Would that be including like a coffee shop stand, like we're talking, like we have right outside here?
I would think, I would think something like that would be, I know we're talking about doing, having some food options. I mean, look, we have food options in the county administration building, right now. I mean, it used to be the blind stand, it's not anymore. We could do something a little bit, a lot nicer than that, more robust than this. This is, out here is farmed out to a private, you know, you just let the contract out. The question is whether you're going to have a live kitchen, whether you're going to have a kitchen operation. That's a whole different.
Yeah, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure where I was understanding what you were.
And maybe nobody has actually proposed it, that's the way I was hearing it, so I just thought I would throw that out there. That I didn't see, I don't see having a big tray line where you've got, you know, 10 different options of different kinds of food, because that's a whole nother, that's a whole nother. I think that's kind of an old-school way to provide for public employees. I don't, I don't think that's really necessary.
Yeah, I was thinking like the Subway model, where they don't have a big kitchen, but they serve sandwiches, or you can have muffins and coffee, and, you know, that kind of stuff. The Subway, I guess that's one of the reasons it's the fastest-growing franchises, because you don't have to have a lot of, all that kind of stuff. I mean, I think they ought to have something, where employees, if you wanted to stay in the building, there are people coming, and they can get something to eat. I mean, yeah, they're not going to get a steak dinner, but...
Well, the other thing is, and I don't, they could speak to whether or not this is reflected in the floor plans, I mean, they're, one of the ways the county administration building is deficient is that there's not really a lot of space to even, for even breaks. Now, in the nice weather, the nice thing is, you'll be able to go up to the top floor, which I think is going to be huge. I mean, there'll be no building in downtown Cleveland that has that option, but that's something that they can, they can address with you.
Thank you. So, as you said, this is our first opportunity as a whole to kind of lay out the progress that we've made from the original approval of the proposal, and I think we'd like to have GEIS present, basically, their progress that they made in the exterior of the building. And I'm going to hand it over to Kevin Brokoff from GEIS, to go over some of the details of the contract.
Good afternoon. Kevin Brokoff from GEIS, you've seen me before up here, talking about the project. Turning with the more general update, we did close on the property on February 4th. The lease agreement is signed. We are pursuing with our port financing, and are looking to close that in the second half of March, and that's progressing well. During our last working session with some of the members of council, we started to talk in depth about the walkway, the garage walkway, and the pros and cons, and what was asked was if somebody could extract the obligations and requirements in the two key documents that addressed the garage walkway, and that's the lease agreement, and then the access and parking rights easement agreement. And I volunteered during the meeting to do that, to kind of have a sense when the council makes its decisions here, to have all the information fresh at their fingertips. So, what it looks like, what I handed out is a lot of words, and it's boring. This is my world, so welcome to it. And I just wanted to kind of walk through and give you the sense of, to refresh your memory on how the walkway is addressed in these two documents. And then, from me, I'll turn it over to Denver, who will go through a little bit more of the design, and some of the key elements with the renderings. So the first page of what I have brought with me here goes through the lease requirements. And so some of the terms you'll hear are garage walkway, that's the walkway itself, the building is the county headquarters, and the parking facility is the, what was known as the Ameritrade garage. So, starting off, just right off the bat, in the lease document, it calls for the reconnection of the garage walkway to the new building as a part of the project delivery event. The project delivery event is what starts the, your occupancy of the building, and that's what starts your service rent and your supplemental base rent. So, if we did not deliver and reconnect the building, and it wasn't right, and there's lots of details in there about how it has to be reconnected, and what it has to look like, but that would subject us to our late delivery penalties. So you have some protection on the overall delivery of the walkway. Next section talks about the establishment of capital reserve fund. The, there is a, this was underwritten to 105%, and that 5% funds into a capital reserve fund. This is something we've talked about here in front of council before, that gets funded out of the debt service rent. It sits there, and it's available as a protection for any capital repairs that are required over the life of the lease. This provision does apply to the garage walkway, as well as the building. On section 5.2B, we'll get into operating expenses. It describes the operating expenses as the expenses and costs for the operation, maintenance, repair, and replacement of the garage walkway. And I pulled each of these provisions out, as it relates to garage walkway. Obviously, this applies to the whole building, but I want you to understand that it also applies to the garage walkway itself, even though it's not a part of the building. So we're required to maintain that in accordance with first-class office buildings in Cleveland. Next section talks about the landlord, it has to pay for all operating expenses necessary to operate, maintain, repair, and replace the garage walkway. So now you see that the obligation to repair, maintain, is in place. It's at our cost, that's reimbursed through your service rent, but the obligation is on landlord. Next provision, 5.2C, gives the county the right to self-help in the event we fail to maintain the garage walkway. The county would have the right to step in and perform that maintenance, and then offset that against future rent. And that was something that was specifically negotiated by the county, to have the right to enforce that maintenance and repair obligation with the walkway. Next one, in 5.2D, is a catch-all, and this relates to more than just the garage walkway, but something that the county negotiated and wanted was if they felt that GEIS was not doing a good job in any component of property management, the county would have the right to take over that component, or the whole, and then there would be an equitable set-off in the service rent. So that's another protection the county has in place against our performance on maintenance and repair. Exhibit F sets forth the cleaning specifications that are required by the county. It's a 14-page document that sets forth how the building is required to be cleaned. The very first paragraph of that document says that it applies also to the garage walkway. So one of the questions that came up is that will regular cleaning and janitorial also be provided in the garage walkway? The answer is yes, the lease requires it. Exhibit G is the security specifications. This is another multi-page exhibit. It requires many things with regard to security, but specifically to the garage walkway, it requires closed-circuit television, video surveillance, and video motion detectors at each entrance. So that's from the building to the walkway, that entrance, both sides, and then from the walkway to the garage, that entrance, both sides. There's also required surveillance on the entrances to the parking facility, as it is connected, and there'll be access up through it, and then, of course, the other entrances for the county's building. So then, the next point is it does require controlled access to the garage walkway through electronic card readers. And then, what this really does is it really has to address with how the county wants to set the hours of operations. You'll see in the next page, the county has the right to set the hours of operation for both its normal business days and for special events, and we agreed to keep it open for a period of time before and after any special event, in addition to normal business hours. What this does is that after those normal business hours, there'll be some sort of card reader system for employees of the county to enter in through this garage walkway, and then it would be locked otherwise. Then the last point on the security exhibit is it does require GEIS to provide security personnel on each lobby. So, right now, we have two lobbies. We have the first four lobby off the street, and then we have the fourth four lobby off the walkway. There'll be security personnel in both of those lobbies. The next page talks about the access and parking rights easement agreement. This was a very significant document throughout the process, for a couple of different reasons. Obviously, it contains the parking rights in the Ameritrade garage, which were very important to the county. It is also probably our most chief asset in our acquisition of the complex, because it is an operating garage that did not require much renovation work to keep it and increase its operations. So it was a key asset to us, and it was a key place for the county to make sure that it had some rights ongoing. As it relates to the garage walkway, what this document does is, in section one, it gives you the exclusive license to use the garage walkway. And this is something that's been clarified a couple of times over, and it's important, so it needs to be clarified. We did make during the negotiations of this deal, the request for the potential for people to be able to access the tower complex through the walkway and through the county's building. For very specific reasons, and mostly security, and mostly internal layout, the county rejected that proposal, and so the county has exclusive use of this walkway. There are no part of the tower will connect through it, unless the county itself elects to lease space in the tower, and then you would also have the exclusive use of the tower walkway, which is on the other side of the building. So, we as the developer of the remaining portions of the complex do not have any rights to use the tower walkway, or the garage walkway. Next one is the one I just referenced, it provides the county with the right to set the hours of operation of the garage walkway for normal operations and special events. Next one requires us to diligently pursue and repair and restoration of the garage walkway upon a casualty event. This is something else where we had some discussion about what was going to be in place, but the county insisted on this provision being in there, and our acquisition lender agreed to it. Next one talks about the requirement that we install and maintain charging stations for vehicles powered by electricity. Next one talks about bicycle racks for the benefit of the county's employees and visitors. And the next one talks about directional signage. These are each components that the county negotiated into this document for really that benefit the county's building itself, but they're in the access and parking rights Section five is a key one that was asked of us, was, and it does obligate the owner. And the reason that this was separated from the lease as a general standpoint, is that the lease is right now owned by a GEIS entity. The remaining portions of the property are financed through different financing, they're owned by another GEIS entity, and we wanted to make sure that these obligations stayed with the property, so they came out of the lease into a standalone document that's filed of record, on the title of the garage and the county building and the walkway. The walkway itself is a ordinance, it is not a property right, so when you see the word license, the reason it's a license is because it can't be an easement. The easement itself is off the street and up through the vertical stairwells and portions of the garage to access the walkway. So that can be an easement, because it is a property right. Just a little bit of clarification as we read through those. But section five requires us to operate the parking facility as a vehicle parking facility during the term of the lease. And that was, again, something that was negotiated by the county into the document. Finally, section seven provides for the maintenance and repair of the parking facility itself, to make sure that that would always be in good condition while the county was an occupant of their building. So moving forward, one of the things that Executive Fitzgerald, yeah, sure.
The term of the lease, is that, is there a guaranteed renewable term at the end of this, at the end of 26 years?
There is no renewal term. There is a option to buy for the $1.
There's an option to buy?
But there's no renewal terms.
Okay, we have to negotiate the renewal, if there should be a renewal?
Well, it wouldn't be negotiating it with us, technically, because at that point, if you did not elect to exercise your option, the property would revert back to the port, through the port financing.
Okay.
Before I move on to any other questions, I know I'm going fast here, but I want you to get to the pictures. Okay, so one of the things we talked about was the condition upon delivery of what we're going to do to the walkway. I think this kind of sets forth in detail the improvements that'll be made to the walkway. The project delivery event, again, is when we turn over the property to you. So the first two components are in that language, and they say structurally sound, which it already is, and weather-tight condition, which it is not right now. So the first item will address that, and that's a new TPO roof. That's the same roof that's going to be put on the county, county's building itself. And we have a letter that's referenced down below from Mike Connelly, who's our engineer, who did inspect the structural condition after our last meeting with council, to give an opinion, and I have turned that letter over to Bonnie and her team. Basically, what it indicates is there's some rust that will need to be cleaned up. That rust is caused by the fact that there's water leaking through the roof, and otherwise, it's in good, safe condition. And based on the structural nature of it, if it was weather-tight, there's no reason it shouldn't be effective indefinitely. So the next one talks about, we're going to thoroughly clean the interior, and then we're going to place new carpet on the interior. This is something that wasn't originally in our scope, but council members have indicated that it was an important item to them, and I think, back to our principles and discussed it with them, they agreed that it was an important component. So they've agreed to include that in our delivery of the walkway. Power wash the exterior, the rust will be taken off, and then it will be painted, but that's just one component of what we're doing with the walkway. And then, of course, we have security on either end, and in the garage pursuant to lease requirements. Again, I've noted the letter from Mike Connelly on the physical structure. And then, some of the questions that were asked also was, did we look at a budget for demolition of the walkway? And we did. It was $500,000 for the demolition. And then, to reskin the garage walkway was $300,000, and that would be include applying new metal panels over the exterior of the walkway. If we have more questions about that, we can bring up our construction people. So, we didn't price the construction of a new walkway, because our inspection revealed that it was structurally sound. We wouldn't spend money to rebuild something that was already structurally sound, so we intended to do the six points that were up a peer above, and turn it over to the county in weather-tight and secure condition. One thing we did want to note is that, as this discussion evolves, if there are items that become important to the council, they can be addressed in our tenant improvement budget and incorporated in, and we certainly would work with county to do that in whatever which is.
Reskining and re-glazing also?
No.
So, reskin is...
Is the metal components.
Denver, Denver?
Right. And I think that Denver might touch on the windows when he comes up here, but the windows, I think, are functionally done the way they were, to provide a cooling environment inside the tower, or inside the walkway itself. But I'll let Denver cover that. The last question that was asked of us was, you know, what would happen after the lease term? What would be the economic incentive for the then-current owner of the garage to continue to operate the garage? And, so what I've kind of laid out here is really the three high-level points that would really show you that there's going to be enormous economic reasoning to continue to operate this as a garage. One is that, obviously, we have our acquisition financing in place now. We'll be moving to permanent financing on the tower this summer, but at the end of the county's lease term, the debt financing, the acquisition, and redevelopment of the garages would be retired, and that would, of course, increase your margins, because you have no debt service. New construction of parking facility is currently approximately about $30,000 per stall. That's why a lot of area developers here in Cleveland are struggling with parking. It certainly is very hard to make sense of it as a standalone project. So again, this is an asset that is now owned free and clear, that there's no debt on, that's very hard to recreate, which would motivate you to keep it by itself. And then the third point is what really makes the business sense, in that hopefully, we would hope the county would exercise their option, or take advantage of a lease sale back and stay at the building. But we would have the county's employees and visitors, the residents and employees and visitors of the redeveloped tower complex, which is going to have approximately 260 residents, 250 employees, over and above the county's employees, and other businesses around the area. Then you have Progressive Field and Quicken Loans Arena, and I can tell you already, in the weekend after that we took title, the garage had its best weekend in its history, and we had both parkers, we did have parkers for the Cavs game, significant amount of them, so it did demonstrate and prove to us what we thought was that people would choose that as a parking option for those events, too. So, there's business income and reasons why you would do it. In sum, the last point is, it kind of sums it up. You have an irreplaceable business asset, free and clear, and a captive market audience to fill it. So there'd be a really strong incentive to continue to operate it that way.
On the previous page, what is TPO as in TPO roof?
Permaplasticolefin, it's a white roof, similar to rubber, but a little different characteristics. It's generally considered very sustainable, and it will help us achieve our lead credits for the building.
Okay. And, Madam Chair, also, what is reskining of the walkway?
Reskining, that's probably another Jen question, to get technical.
Presently, the outside has a metal panel. Because of the deterioration, one option is to clean it, another is to re-clad it, purchase a manufactured metal panel with reveals and joints, put it over top of what is there to give the building a brand-new appearance, or the walkway.
I was wondering at what point I would like to move into talking about the walkway, but apparently, that's been very much anticipated, and I can see why, because you need to deal with it. I, I think most people know, if they don't, they'll know in a minute, I would rather not see the walkway there at all. Everybody that I've discussed this with believes that aesthetically, I haven't had one single person dissent on this, in terms of this issue, that aesthetically, the street, the building, it all looks better without the walkway. The walkway is over 40 years old, and I think it should go. I think it should go. But my concern is, is I know that there are other practical considerations that people have around this issue that are legitimate, you know, legitimate issues, and we could have a very prolonged debate, but, but if there's going to be a walkway, my concern is, is that the walkway is of the quality of the building, of the new building, that it fits with the design of the new building, and that enough resources are put into this to make sure that that's the case. And I'm concerned from what I'm hearing, not because it's not the agreement, I understand that this is the agreement. My concern is that that's not happening, that the kind of improvements that would be needed to this walkway, to make it to the standard, and make it at least look like it's made with the same materials, and of a similar design to the building, have not yet been, to my satisfaction, addressed. And so, just for the record, so I won't go on and on, against the walkway being there in the first place, but if there's going to be a walkway, I really hope that this thing looks like it belongs there, and, and that, you know, I mean, you'll have to explain it to me, but I don't see how $300,000 gets us there. And so, you know, I'm interested, as this discussion goes on, but like I say, I was wondering when this... wondering when this opportunity would come, and it's obviously right now. So with that said, you know, I'll rest.
Can I respond to a few of those? So as we stand here today, we have a lease agreement and a contract that requires us to reconnect it and do these things with the bridge. If a decision's made to go the other way, we have mechanisms through the documents that we can address that. So I'm not up here to convince council one way or the other. I'm here to, I was asked to just extract the information and give you a state of the union on it. And so, I appreciate those comments. One I will address is that the, from a maintenance perspective and an ongoing perspective, what I hope to do by bringing out and showing that the same building requirements that are on the building itself apply to the walkway in terms of the level of maintenance, cleaning, and taking care of the building. Design, I'll leave to Denver, because it's not my field, and he can kind of talk to you about how it blends in with the building and address that. But from the perspective of a decision, you know, we're up here and we're bringing this to a head because we would implore council to, if it's going to change course, to do it quickly so that we can address this and keep it as on sketch as we can for delivery. Any other questions?
Madam President, I do hear my colleague's comments about his belief on the aesthetics. I will chime in on the other side, saying that the mechanics, to me, make more sense to have it in place because of all the other elements of folks trying to come across in wheelchairs, handicap access coming out of the elevator going across, as opposed to going down through the snow, coming back up, seems to me to be a practical aspect. Yesterday, council had, we had looked at doing interviews of our own council consultants of the four groups, two came in with their own accountant, or with their own, excuse me, architects, and of the two architects, both indicated that aesthetically, perhaps, there's an appearance that it might look better. They both fell down on the side, that having the bridge in place would be the appropriate recommendation. So those are, though we have not made a selection at all, I can just say that of the four groups, two of them came in with architects, and both came down on the side, that the practical side has to win in places like Cleveland, Minneapolis, any place with snow. And Cincinnati just put theirs in, Cleveland Heights, I think, just put in a very attractive one in up in Cleveland Heights just recently through the folks that, that actually are guidance folks over at the, let's see, not the medical mark, the Center for Innovation and Health, or whatever it is, and the Med Mart. The Global, yeah, so that crew just had come through a recommendation process for putting a bridge in, a pedestrian bridge up in the Cleveland Heights area, and they're getting rave reviews on it.
Can I clarify one more point for you?
Sorry, but I need to respond. I wasn't in the meeting that you were in yesterday, so I can't speak to that. I have spoken to a lot of other people. But I think what, one meeting I was in with you, that most councilmen were not in a couple of weeks ago, when we had the folks from the county and from our consultants and several others in the room, we had our own architect, who will be up soon, I guess, and when pressed, he said that it would be, it would look better if the walkway wasn't there. So let's at least admit that there are two, there definitely are two very different opinions about this among people, you know, who are trying to decide what's best to do.
I'm not saying that the architects aesthetically have one point of view, but from, when it all came down, they said the practical side is to leave the bridge in, it's architects.
Well, I'd have to have those people come and stand here in front of me and tell me that. Not that I wouldn't believe it, but I would like to hear exactly how they express themselves, and then I would like to discuss that with them, rather than just hear it secondhand.
Well, the point is, there's two sides to this story.
So one clarification that I forgot to give you was that the $300,000, that's just for the reskin component itself. It's not for the roof, the paint, the carpet, and the weatherization. That's just that one piece of it, for whatever it's worth. But to kind of help with this discussion, we do have our architect here, Denver, to kind of walk through, and I think it's probably appropriate timing for him to come up and kind of give you this viewpoint of what he sees.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Oh, just one more question.
I'm looking at the image that we've been given. What should I take from this image? Is this aspirational? Is there anything practical about this image? And they talk about painting and red. If this was built tomorrow, is this what we would have?
Yeah, I think that's where we stand right now. I think Denver's going to come up and walk you through from where we started at, boy, months ago with the building, and where we've gone with the collective comments that have come in, suggestions and tweaks to the building design. And Denver's going to walk you through that process, but that rendering is intended to show you what the final product would look like. But if there's nothing for me else, I'll turn it over to Denver.
Madam President. Thank you. Just on the structure itself, what, there obviously has been an inspection of the bridge. What's the state of the, what's the state of the bridge right now, the walkway?
Structurally sound. The, it was, the only item that was noted was the rust, and the rust is through seepage of moisture through the roof. But they said if that's corrected, and the rust is removed, there's no structural problems with the bridge.
The rust being removed, is that through cleaning, or is that through actual replacing of the steel?
It'd be through cleaning.
Okay.
We have a letter from our engineer that I've handed over to Bonnie.
If, thank you, the bridge itself currently has no air conditioning in it.
That's correct.
Is the plan to update, modernize the whole, the entire system?
There's no plan to add HVAC in our, in our plan. There's no plan for us to add HVAC. If that's something that wants to be discussed, it certainly can be discussed as an option.
Well, that kind of goes into my next question on the utilization of the walkway. If you go, you know, to a Cavs game, you come in off the garage, and you go through the walkway, and they have a ticket security, you know, mag checkpoint there, is that, that's obviously if the, if the bridge, if the walkway's not climate controlled, then obviously it's not a plan in our building. But if it was, would that then free up space in the building if the mag, if the security checkpoint was in the bridge or closer to the, to the walkway, to entranceway to the garage?
I would kick that question to somebody.
Okay. Bonnie, do you understand what I'm asking?
I would think we would have to look at that and see, you know, I personally am just thinking about the physical width of the structure, whether that would accommodate that, but we can look at that and see, and then we would have to look at the lease agreement, whether that would be something that would be permitted in the walkway based on our lease, but...
How wide is that? I remember being, it's like 12 feet wide, isn't it? At least?
And there's doors on the end, right? So if your question is about climate, seepage through, I think there will be doors separating the building from the walkway.
Because right now, into this building, there's only one mag at each entrance. And I would suppose if you were to outline an entrance and egress, you would have about 12 feet worth of, you know, six feet entrance, six foot egress. It's just a thought, because I know the queue, that's how, that's where they do their ticketing and their security sweeps, right there in the, in the, in the walkway. I just thought maybe it'd be appropriate, it would maybe free up space inside the building. That'd be maybe for a coffee stand or, you know, something along that, square footage that becomes available.
Yeah, I know there's a lot of question, but maybe we should have Denver go ahead and give his presentation, because I think some of these might be answered in his presentation, and we can always come back to these questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Of course, if there's any follow up questions on...
I can let you out, so.
Good afternoon. My name's Denver Brooker, Director of Architecture at Vocan. Been working with Geis and the county and everyone on the design of this building over the last few months. There is a whole building behind the bridge, actually. It has evolved, and a lot of the thinking behind what we're doing has evolved with it. And so I'd like to kind of take you through where we've been, our thoughts on the design, approach, and then how the bridge connects into the overall thought for the project. We all know where the site is, corner of East 9th and Prospect and Huron. It's a gateway to the central business district, so it's a very important site. All of you know that. You selected the site, and it's a real opportunity for the city and for you in terms of the location. As you approach this site from any direction, the building has key visibility. So as we looked at the design, its signature visibility from the corner is important. Also, the context of historic and contemporary structures is part of a thought process that went into how we developed the building. We can see the corner here in this image, the upper right, how the bridge appears coming into the building that's now there. It's kind of a clash of two structures. And what we've done, and what you see, is we've readdressed how the bridge interacts with the building and made it an asset and a piece of the design, rather than two alien things coming together. Simply the footprint of the building up close, we'll move into this. You're all familiar with this. This is actually set up for design review with Citi later this week. Aerial view showing how the bridge links to the garage and how this building fits into the overall context of relatively large structures. Thing to point out here, as we talk about the building materiality later, is that the context is buildings like Medical Mutual or the Halle Building, they're clad in terracotta, light colored, institutional, high-quality materials, larger paneled materials. Same is true for some of the more contemporary structures, including the Broyer Tower, which are large precast panels. On our building, we're proposing a similar approach with large-scale metal panels that give it a relationship to its context and the institutional character of the building. Back in late fall, these were the first two images that were presented to you as part of the proposal. Now, there are three key features here that are pieces of the design that have carried forward from the beginning. One, we're maximizing the footprint that we can on the site. Two, there's a corner entrance that responds to its signature gateway presence. And three, we're looking at integrating the bridge into the overall complex and looking at it primarily as an asset in terms of bringing people into the building from the garage that's available to you for the county building. Later in December, this was the second evolution of the design. There were a couple of concepts we put forth that articulated the design a little further, gave it a stronger institutional presence, began to show how the bridge might be a little more integrated into the overall structure. And that brings us to where we are today. This is the current design as we imagine it. Some things to point out with the design of it, particularly in response to a lot of the discussion about the bridges. We've purposefully designed the west face of the building and the south face as kind of two independent elements, or the transition that receives the bridge. You also note that the material color of the upper parts of the building are the same as the bridge. The thing about this bridge is it's, it's a fairly simple structure. It's a steel box being supported on concrete bridge abutments that are buried in the garage in the building, and then the floor is hung from the box beam that's at the top of the bridge. It's simple, and it's so simple that it is probably impossible for it to fail. It's a forever kind of solution, just in terms of how it's structured. It's very simple, and it can be cleaned up and refreshed. There are many examples in this city of exposed steel structures that are quite well done. Progressive Field is one. Much of the structure on the outside of that building is exposed, it's painted, it's been refreshed. And so, we're comfortable that it can be integrated in the building and look really good. Some other things that happened along the way in terms of developing the design of this, you can see that the building is a lot more articulated than the original schemes. There's a rhythm of horizontal and vertical lines. It's kind of got a richer textural presence than it had before. We think it's appropriate for the institutional character of the building. And what happened along the way is, you notice the vertical elements of the bridge and how they're expressed, they actually relate to the vertical elements that we've developed on the building. Get a little closer, and you can see how that starts to come together as something, maybe not so intentionally, actually starts to work. This is the, a close-up of the entrance. Some other things to kind of note about our approach to the building is the first two floors are expressed as a base. And at the entrance, you will enter into a two-story atrium. So that two-story base kind of carries into the inside in a modest two-story lobby atrium. It's part of the whole notion of giving the corner great presence, making it open, inviting to the public. We'll move on to the other views. We did not neglect the east or north faces. They have limited visibility, but we are incorporating as much glass in those facades as we can based on code. There are limitations to the amount, but this is the current distribution on the east side. And then, on the north side that faces the Broyer Tower. And in the middle, you'll see a kind of rectangle there. That's the bridge to the Broyer Tower that's being reconstructed, and it's part of the lease agreement that that bridge be rebuilt.
Excuse me. This is going to go from our building to where now?
To the Broyer Tower, across Barn Court.
In case we want to use the rotunda or something? Okay.
We have the right to run a floor.
Right, correct.
Correct. As we talked previously, we have the option to lease space in the Broyer Tower, as well as the rotunda, as well as the 10-10 building. So this would be that connectivity to those areas.
But we've given no easement for anybody to walk through?
Correct, correct.
All right.
And it would just be sealed up at this point, since we have not exercised the option for those leases.
Okay.
And then you'll notice that we've, on each of these secondary elevations, turned the corner with the primary materials. And in some other views, you'll see how those corners are important in terms of how the building is perceived. This is the first one. You're on Huron, looking west. You see that the east face of the building, it wraps the corner, gives it a little presence, gives it some continuity. And then the final image. This building sits closer to the street on East 9th than the Broyer Tower. So again, as you're traveling south, the corner of the building becomes very exposed, and again, giving some continuity and maximizing amount of daylight penetration into the building. And that brings us back to the primary corner view. I'll answer any questions.
Mr. Kamau? Mr. Rogers?
On the, I'm still looking at the page you just left off on. So the back of that building that's facing whatever tower you're seeing, those are, there's a facade windows, they're not real windows?
These are real windows, yes.
So being that close up, there'll be, I don't know how much space is in between that. Is there any, any space?
There's 16 and a half feet between the face of this building and the Broyer Tower to the north.
That's the alley.
It's the alley to the north of the building.
It looks so close up by the drawings that...
They are close, and there was a lot of discussion with the team about this, but for anyone that's spent a lot of time in an office building, even having a peek at the outside is better than having nothing. So the intention here is to provide as much light in the building as we can. Think of it kind of as a light court that was present in many older buildings in the city.
I'm for that. I just was wondering, by looking so close from the initial drawing that I was looking at, you know, just one office looking into another office building, that sort of... Yeah, everybody deserves a window.
Changing their underwear.
Right. You know, that's privacy. That's what I guess I was kind of looking at, but...
Mr. Rogers?
Thank you. I have a question on the landscaping that currently exists, that little park right in front?
Yes.
And I noticed here it says that existing landscaping to remain slash be replaced. And I'm just wondering, is it going to remain or is it going to be replaced? I got a couple calls on this, actually. I guess this was a Cleveland Public Art Project that was installed some years ago.
The... You want to respond to that?
Currently, we'll be replacing the park in kind. Bring it back. We'll be replacing the park in kind. What is there, we will be replacing exactly the same, but having it work. The lights currently don't work. The fountain doesn't work. But there is talk that the park may be redesigned during this construction phase. We've contacted Medical Mutual, Downtown Cleveland Alliance, Land Studios, and a couple other people, including the artists of that art project, to tell them what we're doing and that they can all be involved. Thursday, there's actually a meeting, bring them all together at four o'clock to talk about that. But currently, we're just taking it down and putting it back until we're able to figure it out. But we do not own that land.
And that's owned by?
City.
The city?
Yes. So that's why we have to, we're help the process, but we're not, we're take it out, put it back.
Great.
You know, the brick facade showing to the north, I think it is. You show three bay docks doors, at least I think it is. Three dock doors?
Yes. The one to the left in the drawing is to the loading docks, and the two in the middle are associated with some indoor parking spaces.
Okay, so that'll be enough room to turn the car, the 16 feet, to make that clearance and get down that alley and get snow out and all those kind of good things?
The civil engineer that Geis has on staff is, he actually took a Suburban and did some modeling for the turning radius, and it does fit. We're proposing three spaces in each bay. Obviously, if you take that down to two spaces in each bay, it makes it a little bit easier, but it does work as far as the turning radiuses go. It's not something that you would want to do in a big truck. The loading dock is configured so that you would pull through the alleyway, and then you would back up in a diagonal into the loading dock, so it makes it function better for the trucks in the loading dock. So they're civil engineered to take a look at that, and it does work.
But the other two docks in the center are not designed to be loading docks at all for like furniture, equipment, anything like that?
Correct. Those are for personal vehicles, passenger vehicles.
So the president gets one and then...
And me, and...
And you.
No, just kidding.
They'll make the turn, so I'll be taking the wrap.
It seems awful expensive to put two docks in for just a couple parking spots. It seems to be a lot of cost for...
The initial requirement, and that's something that we can talk about in the future, too, is the need for that or not. Obviously, the ground floor space is in demand, so, you know, those spaces are taking away from the ground floor space in the building. So we can talk about that in the future, whether those are needed or not. Our original RFP that we had out had a minimum of six spots in the RFP, so, you know, they're required from the original contract to have those spaces in there. But that's not to say that we can't defer from that.
It seems like valuable real estate.
Do you need them for like security or anything like that?
I'm sorry?
Do you need them for like security, emergency vehicles, anything like that, to have those spots? I mean, not for just parking. Would you need them for any other reason, like ambulance, security?
I think they would pull up to either the East Ninth Street side or the Huron and Prospect side.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Geis, Ben?
I'm sorry. I remember from my Board of Zoning Appeals, doesn't it have to be 20 feet? Isn't there a 20-foot fire truck requirement? That the distance between two buildings has to be 20, at least 20 feet? We're rebuilding this building, though.
Nonconform use.
No, this was...
Was this in Georgia?
It was Westlake, but I'm just curious.
Is that the movie, Rolls Royce?
Not mine. Lancy's Maybach, but not mine.
20 feet is very common in different communities as required for fire access. This, however, is an existing roadway. Our property line is up to that 16 feet.
Okay.
And it is not at that end. You can go from East Ninth and come out on Prospect.
Okay. Any other questions of the architect? Mr. Brady?
What I'm hearing is that, to... I'm trying to get this straight now. If we're going to have this walkway, and I know there's a building behind the walkway, but, you know, the stuff that was put in front of us is like all about the walkway, right? So someone has said that it will only take $300,000 to refurbish this walkway. Now, I don't know, but, you know, you're the architect. Can't we do better than this? I mean, are you, do you believe that you can make, for $300,000 in refurbishing, you can make this up to a standard that it should be to be attached to this brand-new, very expensive building? Or are we going to need more resources if we're going to keep this walkway? And everybody seems to be pushing that pretty hard. If we're going to keep this walkway, you know, it's got to be up to the standard of the building it's attached to. And if more resources have to be used to make that happen, if there has to be... And by the way, I commend you for the improvement on the design from what we had seen in the past. I know those were only renditions, and we were only getting started. But let me just say, you know, we'd been at this for several months, and we were told by our consultants that they were our consultants. They worked for us. But I don't always have that feeling that they work for us, you know? And maybe that's just, maybe I'm misguided in that sense. But we were given assurances, week after week after week, that we would have input into this design. And so, you know, I don't think there's anything inappropriate about asking, getting this question out of the way, because the walkway is in the way. There's a building behind the walkway, I know, and you can't see part of it because of the walkway. But what do we need to do to make this walkway if we're going to keep it up to the standard that we can all be proud of as this so-called gateway to Cleveland? I'd like to hear a little more explanation about what you're talking about, about a gateway to Cleveland, unless it's just a throwaway phrase. I mean, is there something else planned here to make this into a gateway to Cleveland that we haven't heard yet?
I think that, to respond to your last question, the intersection of East Ninth and Prospect is a kind of threshold into the Central Business District of Cleveland. Everything before that, you have the sports fields, you have some smaller buildings. When you get to that intersection, you've entered the Central Business District, and the county building is now...
So the gateway is going to be a 42-year-old walkway?
The site, that intersection, is kind of metaphorically a gateway.
Okay, it's metaphoric. All right.
If I might add to that also, you know, the county executive had envisioned that Huron would become the gateway into Playhouse Square. We have a conversation that we're meeting with Tom Einhaus from Playhouse Square to talk about some streetscaping, some refurbishment of Huron Road. Huron Road in that area is a county route, so we have the ability to spend some of our road and bridge funds on that. But I think it's a good opportunity to take Huron and more or less pull Playhouse Square down Huron so that the look is the same. Right now, you have a very specific look that's going on at Playhouse Square. Playhouse Square has a plan to upgrade the intersection of Huron and Euclid Avenue. They're proposing some type of chandelier-type structure, redoing Star Plaza Park. So they have a plan already for that intersection. We would like to continue that design. And like Tom had said from Geis, the conversations that we're having with the park in front of the building might be an opportunity to mimic that same design that they're having in Playhouse Square, so that there's a consistent look all the way down Huron that naturally would be part of Playhouse Square. So whether you want to call it the gateway into Playhouse Square, or whether you just want to say that that's the beginning, the connectivity to Playhouse Square, I think this is a good opportunity to do that. And we're having those conversations shortly.
Mr. Rogers?
Just for clarity's sake, what's being proposed to be done now, the painting and the fixing, the rust, that's all within the current contract and budget?
That's correct.
So if we were to do the wrapping or whatever it's called, that's an additional $300,000 that the county would have to allocate toward that project?
That's correct.
Okay.
I think I may have heard your question a little more clearly than what we were talking about here. It sounded like you were asking, based upon the character of the walkway, what else could you do to it? Is that maybe a better phrasing of it?
If we can't get rid of it, what can we do to it?
Right. So I think that's what we just talked about, because we have what we've discussed about doing. And then, what I just asked Denver, and I said, based upon what it is, what else could you do to it? Maybe that answers your question a little better?
That's where I was going, if I wasn't clear.
If we were to maintain the structure of the bridge, the most ideal solution for refreshing it would be to install new metal panels over the existing bridge and new glass and new aluminum frames, all to match the new building. That would be the ideal solution. It assures you of absolutely seamless, completely identical bridge building.
It doesn't seem that unrealistic, so why is the ideal solution not what we're doing? What do we intend to do?
The, what is in the current project budget slash agreement is a refresh, which is a little softer approach. It gets a new roof. The steel gets cleaned up and refurbished and painted, and the interior gets new carpet. So it's not a total refresh. Now, from a distance, a completely cleaned-up steel frame like that, painted well, is going to look really good. Is it the ideal solution? No, but it still can look good, look integrated.
What's wrong with the ideal solution? We're standing in our way.
$300,000.
I mean, how much does this building cost us?
Yeah, that's not a lot of money for what we're spending.
I'll start a point of clarification, and then maybe we might get more information for that.
Who's $300,000 is that?
So what we have is, we have the roof, the cleaning, the painting, and that's included in our project. The $300,000 is only the cost of the metal panels on the side. It's not the cost of the roof, of the painting, of the cleaning. That's already being absorbed by us in the project. Or the...
Glazing the tiles.
Right. Yeah. So if you would like an answer to what, from where we are, what is the cost from where we are to get to the ideal?
Upgrade, yeah. We want to go first class.
Are we prepared to answer that today, or would you like a time to prepare? We can prepare.
I think we asked this question before. Mr. Brady's question is not new. We asked for this before. What would be, to bring it up to, you know, like to the Maybach of bridges or...
Yeah, I think the difference is the difference between the new fascia steel, which is what the 300 is, and the actual taking out the glass and re-glazing it.
I was real shaky with that word, "refresh," the first time I saw it. Like, what does "refresh" mean?
And that's roof, painting, and new carpeting. Am I missing something? And cleaning.
Which includes the rust in the interior.
So that's what "refresh" means. And then, the refacing is the top portion. The top portion would be, you would reface that with some type of metal.
And the bridge can hold a weight of all this new stuff?
Yes.
So really, and I think to be real simple, we have to let you know what our intentions are. So I guess it's to council, do you want a painted rehab bridge into a brand-new, modern facility? Or are we willing to spend whatever the amount's going to be to upgrade this bridge to match the brand-new facility that we're building? Or is it worth our while to just not replace the bridge, or take the bridge down? And again, that would be at our costs. So those are the options on the table.
Yeah. The, to Mr. Gallagher's point, though, either of those two options, there should be a deduct, I would assume, for not painting, a deduct for not taking those components out. So your $300,000, I assume, was the reskinning of the bridge. If you take out those other components, you're not going to have some guy hanging up there at that height repainting it. And that's not a cheap process, knowing what it takes to paint a bridge. Those are expensive things. So if we're going to eliminate that, I would expect we would get a credit on those components that are already built into the contract for those elements. Is that something that we should be assuming?
I'm not sure that that entirely goes away, because again, what I'm saying is that the metal panels are the metal panels, but there's still portions of the bridge that need to be painted. So that's never going to entirely go away, but there would be an offset. If we weren't doing work, we would, you know, we would endure that change.
So the sooner you get those to us, I would imagine, then council would have to make the decision on what direction to go, so we can give you the direction on which way we want to go.
Well, and I guess, I haven't spoken to the design team or the construction team, but I think there's an opportunity to, I mean, worst-case scenario or best-case scenario, we could paint the structure and do the refresh as they propose. If we don't like it, I mean, we could always do a separate contract to freshen it up again. That's an option, so that we don't feel like we're pressured into making a decision one way or the other. So that's my only thought with that, whether you choose to do that or not, you know.
I think we're going to have a really beautiful, brand-new building, and I just don't think that we want to have a crappy approach to the building.
And I understand that, but I don't want anybody to feel like they're obligated to make a decision on the design of the bridge right now, that I believe we have some opportunities on how we address the bridge later on.
Ms. Simon?
Thank you. With regard to the parking garage, will there be substantial handicapped parking spots for people to be close to this bridge access?
Yes.
I mean, that's the key for me, is, you know, I'm hopeful it's going to look nice enough to satisfy council, but this is for the residents and the people who are coming downtown, our customers. And I think it's going to be a lot easier for them to have access to this building, to have this bridge access. And there's no question about it, that people are intimidated often to even come downtown. And people with handicaps or that type of trepidation, this is really going to accommodate them to make it, I think, easier for them to come downtown and visit our new building. So as long as that's, they're going to have a lot of spots for the residents who come down with handicap, I'm in favor of this bridge, and hopefully, we can maximize the aesthetics. But primarily, it's a functional component.
But primarily, it's a functional component.
Madam, that was something that was specifically anticipated and we actually negotiated above the ADA requirements for that building because we realized as a governmental entity, we wanted to. So whatever the ADA, we went above it. And those being near the bridge. There is also, I think, 25 spots that would be reserved for the county, you know, be it the council, you know, whoever. There are other spots that are near the bridge. So all of that, we can get you a summary specifically of how many spots and where they are, but that's specifically negotiated. And we went above, we found out what the ADA is and we realized we're a unique entity. We need to go above that and we went above that for, in the garage that will be near the bridge.
But it concerns me that this bridge is going to be pretty hot in the summertime if there's going to be no air in that bridge.
Well, Madam President?
I think that's why it is the color that it is. I think that's to control the temperature for that bridge.
But like when it's like 99 degrees, it's going to be pretty hot in that bridge.
I mean, I'll leave that to the engineering.
So here's what I think we can do. To your point, we will, by end of business tomorrow, I just talked to my team, we will have an a la carte scope that says, and really, it's really just three components. So this isn't as complex as we think it is. We'll have what we are going to deliver and then we'll have three basic components over and above that, which, in just talking to Denver, is what you could do to it. And the three basic components are the panels, the windows, and air conditioning, which, we have to talk about it being physically possible, but we believe that's right. So I give, we give you a la carte scope and then the county can see what that would be involved and make their decisions about where they want to go, if they want to add that. Nothing, as we promised, or as we promised with more. But that would be, I think, give you the tools you would like.
Okay. Is everybody...
I just have one question. When you talk about painting, is that interior and exterior painting?
Okay, so that's included. The HVAC, does it need to be sprinkled at all as a result of HVAC being included?
It's not a requirement of the HVAC.
Okay.
Will be required if you use this as an exit out from the fourth floor, from your lobby, in which case we would be required to sprinkle and yes, we are prepared to do in accordance with all...
And that's at no cost to us then? That's part of the project's scope?
Correct.
Just general questions about the project, but not about the bridge.
Do we see a rendering of what the paint would look like? I mean, as long as you're going to, as long as you're trying to sell that as one of the three options, is there any way to see what that would look like on this skin? I assume it's being sprayed with either a, some kind of a...
How much different would it look than that?
It would not.
Yeah, I mean, that's pretty much what you're going to...
No way to see the panel look.
There's no real way to improve the rendering.
Some expectation that paint's going to look like the way I paint. And that'd be pretty sick.
Okay, any other general questions then? Did you have that question?
About the complex.
Well, I still have one on the bridge.
Okay, yeah.
Sorry.
Sorry. Well, we, the other option that I don't know, that seemed like needed to be determined almost immediately is whether or not we're going to keep the bridge or not. And I don't know if, you know, how we move forward with that.
That's a threshold question. Do we keep the bridge or do we, you know, we fix it up? I think we probably should, let's get this information because I think we still... But there is a problem with if we get rid of the bridge, if we have to go back to Cleveland City Council because Cleveland City Council, this bridge is there by ordinance, I believe. Right? So it's not just, we can't just say, "Take down the bridge." We'd have to go to Cleveland City Council now. Is that a major problem? I probably don't think so, but I don't know. I'm just guessing.
Both bridges actually are by ordinance. The one between the tower and the building and then the one between the building and the garage are there by ordinance.
Yeah, so we just don't have the absolute right just to say, "Get rid of the bridge" without going to City Council. And Mr. Greens, ma'am?
Yeah. The bridge, no bridge, does have a ripple effect through the design of the building. We had, in accordance with our schedule, a March 1st date of bridge, no bridge. So putting that out there, you know, we're not here to sell the bridge or not sell the bridge, but we, you know, as we've said, we need to have a decision soon so that we can design and order steel to keep on our schedule. Okay.
Just general questions about the project since this is the first meeting. The, just the rotunda, what, any updated updates on that?
Yeah, sure.
Utilization or...
There's, you know, we've had some very good conversations with both CDA and potential private users too. Keeping the focus on the fact that our commitment, our goal for that space is that it will be space accessible by the public. So an end user has not been selected or agreed upon, but I can tell you that the reaction and the response and interest level has been extremely high from various different users ranging from, you know, hotel, kind of as an accessory to a hotel, restaurant, some market ideas, and then even to businesses that operate and interact with the public on a high-level basis, taking parts of the rotunda. So feedback and interest has been very high. It's really more at this point, kind of, to slot the right people together in a mix in the building.
And then the tower itself, I know there was discussion apartments, hotel, condo. What, any update on that?
We are pursuing a hotel for essentially the bottom half of the building. Those conversations are going very well. But that is a process where you have, again, have to find the right fit and the right sizing. But we have three brands that are very interested in that location. If that does not ultimately work out, which I believe there's a very high probability it will, that building does stand by itself as an apartment building. And that was part of our looking at it initially.
And so above, the floors above whatever hotel goes in there will be apartments? Is that the... And then the million-dollar question is the parking for the hotel and the parking for the tenants. Where will that be? And then, I'll let you answer that question.
So there is no direct connection between the, if it was a hotel or whether it's apartments or both, and the parking garage. There's a couple of reasons for that. One of the most primary ones is that one of our financing sources says that you cannot link the two for very specific reasons that I won't get into. But there won't be any contractual linkage between the hotel, apartments, and the garage. Now, it is a market garage and if somebody wants to go leave the hotel or apartment, go use it, they're more than welcome to.
Let me, just having lived in a high-rise where the parking was underneath, it was obviously convenient, everyday living from bringing groceries to dry cleaning. If they had to park two or three blocks away, do you think that'll impact the marketability of the apartments?
Well, we're happy with the parking in the area as a whole, including our own garage. And then we anticipate that we'll have services at the building, maybe a ballet or other services where we can try to alleviate some of that and break cars to people rather than people going to cars.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'll just note that our website has been just recently updated.
The what, I'm sorry, the website?
Yeah, it's... It's Geisco.net, right, isn't it? Geisco.us has been updated and there's some updated plans for the, what we call the tower complex, which is essentially everything outside the county's footprint.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, any other questions, comments, Mr. Rogers?
Yes, thank you. I'm just wondering if you can speak at all to the recruitment efforts of the construction workforce and anything you can say to Geis' commitment to diversity?
Sure. Well, we have in our financing for the county's project, a 20% requirement for MBE and FBE and consistent with our other projects in the city of Cleveland. We'll go through those recruitment efforts. We've met all of our thresholds on our five other projects in the city. We'll continue to do that. We have great relationships with our minority and female business providers. And in terms of specifics, Tom, do you know specifics that you want to go over in detail or are they in place yet?
They're not in place.
I mean, we'll be working with our compliance people to organize those, but they'll be consistent with our past practices and we'll obviously achieve our goals. You know, I think, I'll tell you one story. I had a, we had a project in the city of Cleveland. I went in to meet with Donella Hill, if you know her. And it was my first project in the city and I said, "Well, I don't understand the process and how's it going?" And she's, I said, "I'm bringing these two people from Geis with me." And she's like, "Oh, I know them, you're fine." And so our reputation is that we work well with them. We try to accommodate their flow of information and certainly in terms of the recruitment and the hiring.
Keep in mind, this is a county project, not a Cleveland project.
Right. That was just an experience of our reputation, but certainly.
Madam Chair?
Sir Jones?
Can you give me the name and number of the contact person for contractors who are interested in potentially doing work with the Maritrus complex?
Yeah. Tom, we'll give you a business card before we leave. Tom Cherick is our project manager for the site. And Jen Dotson sent us them as our architect.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Anything else that go to the order? We appreciate you coming in and we probably should have you come back within the next six weeks. But you got to have the thing by, you have to have a decision by March 1st though. When are you going to give us those?
End of business tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Okay, the first is on Friday, right?
Could you tell us what your Friday presentation is? Is it scope of the project or the details as far as actually? There's no anticipation you're going to get a permit on a Friday, is there?
Demo, yes, right.
But demo is not going to be driven by design, is it?
Not correct. We're in front of planning commission. For demo and conceptual on the building, conceptual approval.
They did bring up the bridge, or the walkway as a component from both demolition part of it, you know, so they want to see what you're putting in place. And so they did spend a little bit of time on the walkway.
Will they hold the demo permit contingent upon that? Is that what they're telling us? Okay.
Mr. Miller?
As to what's needed by March 1st, is it just the go-no-go on the walkway or do you also need to know if we're going with the walkway, what elements we're going to do with it?
Sure, great question. No, it's just the go-no-go.
Just the go-no-go. We don't have to tell you the refresh or excellent.
That could be actually several months from now. Really, you have time for it.
I guess the dilemma is that you're going to come in with some suggestive options and I guess costs attached to them. I don't know how it took us this long, three days before this has to happen, for this to happen. I mean, after six months of this, I don't understand how we find ourselves in this position. But clearly, if it's going to cost, you know, some amount that the council doesn't want to spend to make this walkway presentable, then the only alternative would be to tear it down. But you want the decision to tear it down or not tear it down to be made in the absence of that information. We're not going to have another meeting between now and March 1st to decide this. And so I'm just going to suggest that since I feel pretty clearly, I've been at this a while, that I'm in a minority position here on not wanting this walkway, which I will hang over everybody's heads for the rest of your lives. But I do want a building that 10 years from now and 20 years from now is going to look like something that we should be proud of and not something we should be ridiculed for. So I will withdraw my opposition to the, to tearing down this ugly walkway so we can move on. But it's only because I'm caught between a hard place and a rock. But certainly, unless other members are, it's my sense that the majority intends to, believes that the walkway should stay. But I sure hope that this will be something that we can be proud of.
Do you want us to poll council now?
You can poll it if you want. I mean, I, sometimes I can read minds without polls. You know, and you get really good at this after a while, you know. And you don't have to, like, you know, have a public meeting to do it. I think, you know, we're in a jam and I don't want to keep us in a jam. But I do want a walkway that fits the architectural qualities of the building and it's something we should be proud of. And I think if we cheap out on this, we're going to, you know, we're really going to not have done the right thing.
Yeah, Mr. Gallagher?
So the question is, either tear it down or keep it and the council must understand that if you don't build it to the quality of the new building, you're cheaping out. And that is going to be tagged on everybody that cheeps out. So are we going to do it right? We have one shot to do it right. It's going to cost us extra money and we'll be criticized for that. Yes, we will be, there's my free lunch. I'll bet you lunch. We will be criticized for that. So either we keep it and do it right, or you get rid of it and we move on. So why don't we, why don't we figure that out? What we want to do.
Well, I think, there's some advantage to it and I've been, I kind of wake up nights thinking about this, but if we're going to keep it, we got to do it right. And we can't have a tacky bridge up there. I think I started saying that. We got to have, we got to have an access that looks nice, that's accessible. The people are not dying from the heat walking through there in the summer. The carpet is not all raggedy. I mean, it's got to look nice because if this is going to be the gateway to the city, we can't have this crappy bridge up there.
Maybe we have naming rights and it's...
Either way, it's going to cost us money, right? Taking it down or fixing it the right way. So are we willing to spend money to take it down or spend money to do it the right way?
Madam Chair, can I ask him a question?
Yes.
If it's $500,000 to demolish it, is it going to actually be cheaper to fix it up?
That's the way they tried to present it, but I don't believe it.
And then they threw up the hurdle that we can't tear it down without the city's consent, that we could have a hang-up at City Hall.
So did you hear my question?
I think I was asking the same question and we're just not prepared to answer what the net would be right now. We would want to check it. But again, you know, this part of it would be three bid, open book, you know, so the county can see what we've spent on that.
But just as Bunny stated earlier, I mean, I'm for the bridge for the disabled and for, you know, all the seniors in the winter and, but I am for doing it right. So like Bunny said, we don't have to con... Miss T. won. Bunny. We don't have to decide that design phase now. We just have to decide.
To decide the money. We don't have to decide if we're going from which level to which level today.
Do they have to do it?
Well, if we're going to put the bill, I guess they have to do it. I mean, we're...
Absolutely.
I just don't think anybody wants, we want this to look very presentable.
You know, I agree with everything you say and if we do choose to keep the bridge, I think we have some time. And just like you guys always say, let's take some time and think about, you know, what that bridge is going to look like. And I think we have an opportunity.
March 1st?
No, that's the bridge, no bridge. I was saying if...
I don't even know, Damani, I don't even know what we're doing.
Yeah, I know, but I'm saying if we keep the bridge.
Oh, if we keep it, yeah.
Right, that was my first statement.
Let's get, you know, let's crawl before we walk. Are we going to keep it or are we going to get rid of it?
That's what I like, I'd like to know that now. It sounds to me like people are going one way, but I don't know that.
The person who had the biggest objection to wanting to destroy the bridge, get rid of the bridge, is Mr. Blow Up The Bridge. He wanted to blow up the bridge.
Don't be surprised if it disappears. Mayor Gailey did that once up in Chicago with a black hole. Makes feel.
Yeah, this is becoming the bridge over in troubled water. Mr. Brady has withdrawn his request to remove the bridge. So, and I don't see anybody else that's like, you know, jumping up and down to get rid of the bridge. So I think the consensus appears to be that we want a bridge that's more than refreshed, that's substantially enhanced, so that it meets the quality of the building. Is that adequate, pretty much? Okay? And that we will then, there will be some negotiations as to the cost of going from refreshed to, say, enhanced. And that is going to be negotiable. You're going to have to give a little, because there's things he won't have to do, but we're probably going to have to cough up some more money and take flak from the plane dealer and everybody else. But when people are going through there and seeing it and seeing the total image, I think that in the long run, it'll be very positive. Is that, okay?
Yeah, yeah, Madam President, just one thing. And just to support the frustration from Councilman Brady, whether you're in favor or not, the issue of this body only having three days to make a very important decision is really a persistent challenge that we've faced on this project and other projects. So I sense his frustration separately from the subject matter to the protocol. And so although it's not directed at you per se, we need to be more informed earlier on. If we'd have known this deadline was March 1st, maybe early on, or it was impressed upon us if it was presented, I would find it easy to believe that we would have had this discussion three weeks ago instead of three days before the deadline.
We'll continue to improve on that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would go on the record as being an anti-bridge guy. I didn't realize that all these years the county's been against people in wheelchairs and handicaps by not having a bridge to the administration building or the Justice Center. So anyhow.
We're sort of debating up here about when to have the next update. And I said a month, but there's some talk of every two weeks. So you can have a very brief update every two weeks. So every other council meeting is like the first council meeting of each month. They, a broad date. I think that's probably fair. Just to get started, yeah. And if we can always stop, but I think if we start at that point, then everybody's kept abreast. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I think the, you hiring a consultant will help with that. There's a lot happening every week as we move through the design. So it, two weeks is probably a good timeframe. And then as we start construction, you know, we can spread those timeframes out.
Right, and then there's going to be the fit plan, which will deal with these issues about, you know, the cafeteria, no cafeteria, the space, the yoga room and, you know, the great union.
The yogurt room?
Yoga.
Ice cream room?
Yes.
I heard two different things. If it was every two weeks, that would be every council meeting.
No, 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 I'm sorry, every, well...
If it was just the first council meeting of the month...
Right, that's right. The first council meeting of the month? That's likely once a month. Do you want to do it every council meeting?
I think every council meeting for the first couple, four or three months. Let's get these things aired out so there's no misconception.
Okay, all right. All right, I think it's good, we can always stop them. Right. Even if it's only like 15 minutes or a short period of time. And then if, because questions will be coming up and then, you know, we'll have an opportunity to ask those questions and discuss them among ourselves. So, all right. So we'll anticipate, what time do you want to do that? At four? You think a half hour is enough? Four instead of...
We just went an hour and a half on just a bridge. I think...
Three? Well, no, no, does that conflict with the committee meeting?
Madam President, on March 12th, that will be the, you were just going to announce this evening, having to do with that Board of Developmental Disabilities reception started earlier than the committee meeting or than council meeting.
Yeah, that's right, March 12th is a problem.
So that would be what, around four-ish? So if you would want to schedule this for...
And that's Councilman Gallagher's committee, which is before this, before the three o'clock work session.
Start what?
Starts at one. Councilman Gallagher's committee meeting starts at one.
Well, we can do this, you know, our meetings start at five. If we can do a short update, we'll just conclude in the meeting. How's that?
From three till four and then...
Okay, we can start from three, we can go from three to four then. Three o'clock on the 12th, okay?
What's, what's the board...
There's a, we're going to announce it. We're going to announce it, okay. All right, is there anything else for the good order? I think we finally hashed some things out here today. Okay, bring your boxing gloves next time and we'll be here. All right, is there anything else for the good order? Any public comment?
Madam Chair, there is no public...
All right, all right. No further business, we stand adjourned until five o'clock.